I can. Still hear that echo, but anyway. Okay. I'd like to call the Dover Suckworth meeting to order at 6:02 PM this evening. The first order of business is the presentation of the townwide reappraisal proposal by New England Municipal Consultants.
Thank you. I'm Bill Kerjeski. I'm the president of New England Municipal Consultants. This is Ryan. So that's for Ryan's my vice president in charge of the southern part of the state. If we would win a contract here, Ryan would be running the job on a day by day basis. What we'd like to do tonight is just give you a little quick introduction of software. Not take any longer than maybe 10 minutes yourself, and then I think you probably have some questions and we'll try to answer them as best we can. Ryan's going to take you quickly on a quick look through the software, just in terms of the way it works, navigation and things like this, right?
Yeah, so this on your screen is the newest application for Patriot AP5. This is your home screen. If you can see, there are multiple tabs here, account detail and buildings. These all work as like a web browser, so I can easily click through the different data points. I could even, if I had multiple screens, I could click this tab and drag it and create two screens at once. So it's more of like a web browser design on the front. This left column, I loaded a filter of certain properties. This is a Manchester, Vermont, partially created database. We're in the middle of the appraisal right now. The lookup criteria up on top, so you can see we're in grand scheme of 2022. That year obviously changes as we move forward through time. We can look up by an account number, which is a Patriot assigned account number, parcel ID, which is a town assigned parcel ID. We can look up by street name, number, as well as ownership. And user account is going to be in place of the spam number. So we'll have spam numbers built right in for easy navigation. So in this filter, I can kind of just click through and you can see it's going to bring us to different properties that's loaded into this filter. Photographs are very easy to put in. You can load them up and cycle through. We take as many photos of a property that's necessary. The sketch program is easily described as cat, I can draw many draw functions here. I can click a sketch. I'll do this on a laptop pad. And get that to close. So really any, any shapes, any type of square footage can really be accomplished. The other thing I just wanted to show quickly is that. We have a lot of properties that have multiple buildings. And we can add as many building cards as needed for any specific property.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that if it, I think it's important, otherwise we'd have to jump back.
Right, so a question. Looking, so this is what I would get if I printed off a property card?
Uh, no, so if you were to print off a property card?
My question is though, if public is trying to get like a public card, how different is it than what like Susan and I would be working with?
It can be exactly the same thing if that's what you choose to do. There's a system where you PDF all the records and they can be held in a file like that. I, I think, I need to be careful here. You would have to host them on Patriot server at that point, only because you need a search mechanism to find it. So you can't just pick up a whole PDFs and put them online and say, okay, you can find what you want. There needs to be a way to search them, but it absolutely can be done. There's also a lesser one that can be printed also. It really is sort of a what would you like?
Whatever. I guess my concern would be, would they see a working value perspective or?
No, you would not from a previous year's database. Not the working. So this would be, this is the card, if you were to print a card on the box. So the front of the card has ownership, land value, previous assessments, sales information, legal description. Land is also on the front, as well as really important is the activity on the property. Any activity on the property should be recorded in the system that has on, we've never run out of spots. So it's really important to keep the history of what activity been done on the property, so you know if it's been inspected or not. So you know what data to be looking at. The back of the card is everything to do with the building. Yeah, we have the first photograph in the system, the sketch, as well as all the exterior general information, interior information. And down in the bottom, it's being cut off a bit here, but all the outbuildings, there'd be six lines of outbuildings displayed on the card. You can also print any of these sections individually and report you.
I have a question. Maybe it's going to come up with Bill's presentation, but I think a big concern was shifting from ProVal to this new software. And are you going to be talking about that metal or should?
Yeah, so and maybe I can comment on that quickly because this was something when I, I read the ministry meeting that you had, et cetera. Whether, whether you choose Russ or you replace a Russ. You're, you're paying us to relook at all property in town. I'm not here to copy old information. I'm here to collect information, re-measure a house, re-inspect the house and put it up fresh. So when we do a conversion, we usually just convert the legal data and some minor things. I don't convert Russ's data. I'm not interested in it. I don't know whether it's correct or not. I don't know when it's collected. I don't know how accurate it is. You're paying me money to go to everybody's house and recollect data. Now, the only time I go back and look at Russ's old record is if I can't get inside your house. If you won't give me an inspection to your house, I'll go back to the old record and look at, see, okay, is there something special? I take, for example, you know, house has heavy radar issues. Well, I'd want to look at that too, but that's the only time I really look. Or if there's an internal note, we're going to collect everything brand new on the outside. So I don't need your notes about the exterior of the house because we will measure everything unless somebody denies us. Even measuring a house, which sometimes that does happen. Um, I understand that. We, we work really hard to try to get people comfortable and it's not easy. But during COVID and stuff, we, we really developed some pretty good procedures for getting people on board to understand this is an important process. We're just trying to be fair. Don't, don't, don't put us in a position where we have to estimate your house. We'd much prefer to be able to look at it to make sure we get it right. Because it's important. I don't know in this community to see the same thing, but I found throughout my career, I've been doing this for 45 years. Is, is that people usually are embarrassed about their living conditions. It isn't about, I don't want to let you in my house because I'm, you know, under the case of burglary. But that's, that's not what people, people are more concerned. So we try to put people at ease. I'm not here to comment on your, your housekeeping or the color of your walls or, no, I'm, I, I look at your house and it's empty. There's no furniture inside. How, how many bedrooms are there? Are there closets in the bedroom? What's the basement like? What kind of furnace do you have? What kind of flooring do you have in the house? How many bathrooms do you have in the house? As if it wasn't maximum, we've done a kitchen inside us. Think about the real estate market. And what drives the market forward? One kitchen, one bathroom, rehabilitation. That's what we're looking for. So at least in my estimation. When I read saying that, you know, we're going to lose all this data, you're not going to lose any data. We converted ProVal completely in St. John'sburg, completely did the whole thing. I mean, did it very, very successfully. I have, I'm not, I'm not interested in Russ's data particularly. I'm, I'm interested in Demerit's data, so I can set up a, a basic shell. But really, if you can't get in the house, I'm not interested in that data. It's our job to collect.
Sarah, um, so you said that you're not interested in his data, but then you just also said you're converting it. So you'd be doing the conversion for historical use?
I, I would convert, almost everything we convert converts out of the number. We're going to take your legal files, your previous data, previous assessments. So we create a history, just like Ryan and I can bring it up where it shows previous history. We'll, we'll, we'll bring over as many grand lists as we can because we'd like to have them all. We don't have the land guy at the building bag. That's the history we'll hold in it. Now, what we often do with something like ProVal or if we look at a Microsoft system, which is what state uses, the state CAN system, or a vision system or somebody else's, will often use the cards and try to set up a basic sketch. Because it's easier for our guys in the field to work with something than work with nothing. So we do convert by hand, manually, a few things, but not very much. Because you're paying us to collect it. Take, for example, I'll go into Russ's system or I'll pretty dump the data if I can. Sometimes we'll, we'll try to talk to some of it. I like to get the year built some houses because people don't know when the house is built. It's easier for me to step inside someone's house and say, I have here on the record that your house was built in 1858. Does that sound right to you? Yeah, yeah, that sounds right. Rather than saying, oh, old your house? Uh, I don't remember. It's so, there are things, outbuildings. I, if I see that there's a garage and two sheds and a carport, I'd rather know that they're there and be able to say, okay, this is what I'm showing. Do you have more than that? Did they get ticketed down? Regardless, we're still recollecting because I don't even bother with the measurements on the garage. All it says is garage, shed in our records to start with. We'll measure and we'll do it. I'm not going to take the old measurements.
So the, the photography and the drawings, the footprint drawings, you're all providing that?
That's all us, yes. And this is, I, I, I don't, I, let me just say this. Patriots Sketch is, is absolute superior to anything you'll find in the market. I've used other systems before. They require you to reopen a sketch. Patriots Sketching System, you, you want to add on an addition, you add an addition. We can label that addition for what year it was built and how much it's under construction and its grade. And we can actually almost value it in a separate way. So what you're looking at right here, I can, each one of these areas could be labeled as this, this area here was built. You don't see my, Ryan?
You show your votes. I'm trying to move my votes a bit, so.
But the point is, is one of those, let's just say the, the right-hand wing, that might be built in 2012. And the left-hand wing was built in 1893. I set up a depreciation schedule and everything so that that house values for an old part and a new part. It blends depreciation, it blends grade. So I'm able to absolutely pinpoint. So you'll see when we, if we did this job, you're going to find houses and you're going to see labeled that this addition was put on in, in 2018. And I'm able to change specifically. Just think about it. I've got a house that's, let's say very vanilla, all right, pretty good shape. But then they put an addition on and then addition is a, a brand new kitchen. It's got a master bedroom up over it with a master bath. This was recently built. I, I wanted to treat that property. I don't want to take the whole house and say, oh, this house is now an A-grade house because it's not. That section is an A-grade, this section is a C-grade. So treat it like it is. It's the same thing we do with kitchens and bathrooms. A kitchen and a bathroom should never be a part of a square foot cost. Why, why would I do that? I would much rather say the kitchen is a $25,000 item. Now, you've got a spectacular kitchen, maybe it should be a 50. I'm able to grade the kitchen specifically by looking at that. So in an older house, somebody hasn't done a ton of work, but they have redid their kitchens, they've redone their bathrooms. I can direct the assessment at those sections, which is where it belongs. This is a highly functional piece of software that does that. It allows you to take the house and treat it, my estimation, proper, blend all the pieces. I'm sorry, I'm going on and on.
No, but these are, these are really important things for us to understand and, and to, to really understand the power of this program.
It's as powerful as it gets. It's, it, at least, I'm, I'm, I've been in the business, like I say, since 1972. That's how long I've been in the business. And it is the best piece of software in the market. Another one that comes close is Vision Technologies. It's a pretty good product tool. But it, it's far superior to anything else. I don't know every software program in this country. In New England, those are the ones you see usually are Patriot and Vision are the two biggest software companies in New England, far and away.
So I, I think another major point that was brought up was how are you going to deal with Mount Snow? And what's the proposal for including that, that three of that reappraisal?
I think that, that I, I tried to explain in my letter. I misunderstood. I, I knew, I was under the impression that you were looking for a full-blown appraisal of a mountain. I don't have somebody on staff to do something like that. Now, if we're looking for us to put it together and do a negotiated talk with Mount Snow about it, we've done that in Jay. Jay is one of our clients. We've done Jay. Burke is our client. We've done Burke, which we really don't know what happened with those two mountains, but that's besides the point. And we also do blood.
That would be bad luck, so.
You have your own story here. So, and we also do blood load, which is a chemo. In every one of those cases, the only one we had a full-blown appraisal done is a chemo. The town of Lethal wanted a full-blown appraisal, but I don't even think, did he deliver on the appraisal or did they settle beforehand? It wasn't a settlement. It was the, the town had an agreement that when we did a reappraisal, that, that the mountain wanted to back up. If the value was going up, the town was like, fine, we paid for it. If you've had a good relationship with Mount Snow, I, I suspect we'll just find it. I, I know how to do them, but if you're going to ask me to go to the court, I, I'm not the one you want to put. You want an expert to report, somebody who has the credentials to do it. And that's, that's where I misunderstood. I, I included it as part of the, what we did. I don't have a problem with that. It's, it's, it's not that difficult to deal with.
Ryan, so your reappraisal of a chemo, was that under the ownership of Vale? Or was it the previous owner's?
It was under Vale. Yeah, it was done by Brandon Fox.
They're not particularly litigious as far as I can tell so far. I don't know whether that's going to.
I just was curious if it was in that kind of timeline, since we are new, new Vale resort.
So 2021, yeah, was the, as of April 1st, 2021 was a private appraisal by Hawks and we haven't heard a P.
No, they were, they were satisfied with it, so.
Okay. So also could be, just because we have about 10 some minutes left, the commercial appraisal of regular commercial properties?
We have, we have an income part of the module. One of the things you'll, you'll see with this is everything is integrated. There are, there are three databases. There's one database and there's an income model to it. There's a comparable sales model to it. There's a cost model to it. There is a multiple regression model to it, but don't ask me multiple direction, please, speaker, multiple direction, that's excessive work. This just, there's not enough data. There's not enough, there's not enough homeowners committed to make property to make work, right? But the income approach, yeah, the income approach is very, very well developed in this system. We have a tendency to use the income approach as a backup approach to commercial property. We present most assessments as a market cost assessment. The cost is developed, it is, is adjusted through the market, so primarily through depreciation. So we do the same thing when we look at income property. If we use the income approach, we compare it to the cost approach. I have more, I have more faith in what the income approach has to say. So we often use that to develop economic depreciation adjustments, location. Because we're saying, okay, if it's coming in lower than we were, that we're predicting at a cost model, then there's a reason for this. The location isn't what it should be, or maybe the mix of stores or whatever it might be. But we're, we're very well versed in, in doing this. We do them both. We do both approaches for all, in all, all properties. The only, the only caveat, I would say that is we need your help to make sure that, because we need to get income and expense information from ownership, so.
And what if that, we can't get that? What are the ramifications?
Well, we, we work really hard to collect it in other ways.
Well, everybody's going to say, oh, it's been COVID, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
That's okay. They can tell us that and, and we'll, we'll work with it for the most part. There is, you know, we usually ask for two, three years worth of income. It's not going to be easy. I, I agree. And it, and it's a reality. Commercial property has not increased in value as residential property has because of that. And as we've seen, a lot of businesses, that's just a reality. And remember, no matter what we may think, our job is to set an assessment for everybody as of April 1st and whatever year it is. Well, this is what's going to happen in the future. No, it's, it's, it's right there. So if, if things improve, well, then you have to.
I think, Joe, do you have a question? Is he on? Is he tabby?
I'm here. I don't have any questions as of yet. I'm just listening.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to weigh in. Linda?
So I was, I, in the past, when we looked at, there was a time a few years back that we were looking to reappraise the commercial, including Mount Snow. And there was quite a bit of confusion amongst the town as far as the income approach versus cost. There, there was some adjustment done last year. I had someone come in. She did an excellent job collecting data on, oh, the majority of the commercial properties she got in. We, it was not based on income approach at all. It was merely done on a cost basis. There, there were some that adjusted up, some adjusted down, some. I think there were maybe even quite a few that just were good where they were. But to, to be able to just say a little bit about, I, I think it's been kind of a, a little sticky subject here. As far as what does that really mean as far as income approach?
Let's, let's, let me, let me just start by saying this, and I'm not, we, we work for you. And if it's your decision that you don't want to come in by income approach and you don't want to do this, we won't do it. We'll do the best we can with sales that have occurred and with the cost approach. I prefer not to because I'm not, I'm not as comfortable with the answer. I'm an, I'm an appraiser. That's right. And, and commercial property is all about the income approach. You're an appraiser, you're really not. The other approaches are just window dressing. Income is the way you come in at it. It gives you a much better answer. But I work for you, so if, if this is not something you don't want to bother your, your commercial owners in town, we won't, we won't do that. We'll, we'll figure out some way to make it work. Oh, actually, it's next to my. I, I will make it work, but I use different methodologies, that's all.
So Man- Manchester, we sent out, there's 368 commercial properties. We've gotten over 300 income inventory forms back. We, there were a lot of questions, hundreds, literally hundreds of phone calls, but mostly specifying that we are concerned about the income of the real estate.
It's not your real estate that's come out.
It's not the business income. So that's kind of the step one to clarify what we're actually looking at. So what is restaurant space, rent form versus retail versus office versus a service garage versus a convenient market? It's like in Manchester right now, retail is tanking, restaurants are booming. And we can not only see that in the sales, but now we also have, we also have the income expense inventory forms to back that up as well. So it's something where in Manchester, we weren't really sure how it was going to work. It's been very successful in the returns. I've gone through about half of them. I'd say out of the half I've gotten through, a third are unusable there, you know. But still, the fact of the matter is the data is coming in and there was a, there was a, there was a time available to clarify what data we're actually looking for. So maybe worth at least trying.
It is, you know, it's, it's a cliche or whatever, but you, you could make a million dollars out of a hole in the wall or you could lose a million dollars at a palace. The point is, is it's only about the real estate. It's not about the business. We're trying to figure out what the rent for the real estate is, not how much money you make. And I think if you can make that point to people and at the same time, this is really important for you, Linda, is that this is not public information. It's one of the few things that are not. And you, we don't take it with us. You're going to be the key keeper that you can't share. Appraisers are going to be all over you. Oh, you've got those rents. No. So if you want to get the confidence, your, your commercial people don't do that. You don't do that.
So this sounds like a discussion that if we select you guys, we can tailor this as we get more into the weeds of the whole thing. Come on in, Joe.
Yes, sorry. There was a discussion about how to hire your field staff and what level of experience. And, you know, it, it sounds like you've done it another time. So if you could just clarify how, that would be helpful.
We work with a, with a, we're a small company. We work with a small, with a small staff. You would, Ryan, if you were, he's been working for, I think, three years, nine years now. More than likely, Sean Fairbanks would be the same, would be the other guy who would come in and Sean, Sean for a couple of years now. I don't hire people easily. It's not, it's, it's, like, to find the right people. You're not going to get anyone who's inexperienced working in here. It's not going to happen.
So you know, just don't, as, as an example, so even if someone new were to come in and be working directly with me for as long as.
He's holding the other end of the table or something.
Sean worked right with me for about six months before he slid on on his own. And then I reviewed his work for another four months after that. So no matter what data is collected in the field, there's always multiple levels of review. So there'll be multiple levels of review during data collection and then as well as the end of the final review process. We'll, we'll literally drive, we'll print the entire stack as built and we'll drive through the entire town and double check our final values.
Much, much to the chagrin of our guys in the field, sometimes we have two people doing data entry. And if they find that something's not consistent, data entry gets thrown back to the guy in the field or recollect it. They don't like that, so then we'll do it right the first time. You'll be fine. So we, we use multiple levels to check the data because none of this works unless the data is correct. None of it works. I can't, I can't make something, I can't run it. I can run all the great analysis in the world and everything, but the data's no good. It's not telling you. That's why we collect it all.
So I have a question about timeline. So say, we say in August, okay, you guys are it. Can just, can you lay it out in front of us a little bit so that we all kind of hear it? And I know you're busy and I'm just kind, I'm trying to understand and compare apples to apples on this too.
We would, we would probably run a conversion by the early fall. Because what we want to do is we want to get Linda up working on the software. We wouldn't do a final conversion, so to speak, although it would be mostly just legal. Until you pretty finished, we did 2023 grant list. Because we like to start at an absolute point and that 2023 grant list, that's owner adds up, value adds up, everything. But the sooner I can put it on your desktop, on their desktop, first of all, the sooner we can get going. But the sooner that Linda becomes familiar with software, that's a big, big thing. She gets it. We talk about training and we, and so much in our contracts. But the best training is, let us, let us, you know, do transfers, do property transfers, a new system. Do lots, what's a new system, do things like that because that's what teaches you about it more than. So the answer to that is as soon as possible. After that, I mean, I, I, what did we, what are we showing for a date here? I think 2/26, 2/26. And I, I apologize for this, but you got bumped.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I, I, I'm a small company and someone offered a contract and I couldn't say no to it. I, I got, I got feedback. Yes, oh, I took it. And that, that, that bumped you to a 2/26. So the likelihood is, we don't want to collect data too far in advance, but we would probably start in the summer of 2024, spring of 2024. So that gives us a whole year plus to get everything the way we want.
We would start in the outskirts, single-family residences and save all the high density for the end. So all your condo complexes, stuff like that, we can literally go right down the line. It gives us a better, it gives us a better timeline on the finish date for data collection.
Trying to, gives us some time too to get to know some of your property managers and stuff as well. And that helps us to get into, particularly condo complexes and stuff. You can, you know, we'll send out a letter to the owners and say, if you just contact your, your manager and give a mission, they'll show us through.
And another question I have is, have, have you provided any names and towns where we can get reference, you know, reference?
It should all be in.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
We have about thirty installs in the state, something like that right now. Everything from Burlington to.
Of course, we're most interested in resort towns. You know, so we would be interested in Chemo or what, you know, what, you know, Ludlow and Stowe or whatever you might, that kind of thing. Yeah. Other questions?
I have one. Um, there was some confusion about Marshall and Swift. That I was recommending it not be used. I, I know we had a conversation about that, but, and maybe you could just address that.
Sure. You, you, you do not need Marshall and Swift. We have Marshall and Swift, and we use it. I'll give you a simple process here. Determined assessment is a simple equation, land fulfilling equals value, right? So in an equation, if I know two things, I can determine the third. So if I determine land value, and I work with it, and I have a sale price, so a sale price, if I take that land value away, that's telling me that's what that structure is worth. Absolutely, but it's a good indication. Now, we initially put Marshall and Swift per square foot prices into it, but we stuck to adapt that up. And I just, the, the, the state doesn't say fair cost value as of April first, it's fair market value as of April first. So we don't really use it. Now, in this system, there's all sorts of things. If you wanted to use Marshall Swift, you actually can do it, but who wants to pay for such a thing? It's give costs of fortune. We use it, but it's not used directly. One of the things you would know, Linda, when you look at, and I now, you know what, I'm not going to say that. I don't, I don't like the box of high competitors. They'll, they'll present what they like to the stuff.
So market adjusted cost.
It's a market adjusted cost, but this is a flexible system. You can go into tables and change anything you need to change, any weight you want to need. There's no black box to this, to this software, none. It's fully open. Yep, there's no black box to it, believe me. You don't, you're not dependent on schedules. You can change anything that you need to change.
As the, as the market fluctuates?
You can, remember, you can do that, but remember that, that requires its permission. Once you set values, you always remember that we're, we're, we're a COVID fueled market. We may find that two years from now, the market does this. And the state will allow you, when you do a reappraisal, they give you a five-year period and adjust values. So you may find that you want to do it. I think a lot of people might, you might be setting values at a peak. And then two years later, nobody wants to be at a CLA of a hundred and fifty. You just, you don't want it. But that's a process. And and when you do it, though, it's cheaper. So take, for example, I don't know. I, I apologize. I don't remember what our, our bid number was here. But if you went out and did one after, and you had to change your schedules, and you used us as a consultant to do it, you're, you're talking about relative, under a hundred thousand dollars, way under a hundred thousand dollars to build new tables. If that's what you needed to do, because this, this initial reappraisal is a lot of money that's spent, because we have to go visit every house. But in the five-year interim, you have to do some review, and you have to do a random study and things. The state demands it, but it it's, it's, it's a, it's a great tool. You have that five-year period. You may have to evaluate yourself, but I just, I, I set a value as April first, two thousand and twenty-six. What's it going to be April first, two thousand and twenty-eight? I don't know. I, I, my business looks backwards. It doesn't look forward in many ways.
Yeah, just, just add a little point back to Marshall and Swift. So I think a good example is, within the same building, we can value a bathroom at eight thousand dollars and seventy thousand dollars within the same building, based upon what?
I'd like to see a seventy thousand dollar bathroom.
So that, that's what gives us a little amount of power where, you know, the first floor may be original, second floor is granted.
Okay, Joe, you have a question?
I just have a question, you know. Talking with Linda over the years, because you have price fluctuations of, all of a sudden, land starts going up in price. So we've talked about, and I don't know if the system will allow or something during your period, this, like neighborhoods. So say, we have Dover Hills, we have Eastover, certain areas, certain sectors of the real estate. I'll say everyone all of a sudden wants tons of land. Maybe everyone wants less land. Is there any way that this system will allow us to break those down?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can have different neighborhoods, because condos all of a sudden could be, nobody wants to buy them anymore. They could just drop.
Well, first of all, every, every condo always has its own neighborhood anyway, because every condo reacts differently. But if, if you have upscale or, or neighborhoods that aren't the, you know, let's just say you have even a bigger boom in town. There are ways to target only certain neighborhoods. We could, we could target, you know, by age of houses, by grade, anything that's relevant as long as it's backed up by analysis.
Right.
And you feel comfortable with it.
But stuff that we can quick put together in here, so.
And you do see that happen, absolutely. You're running your annual CLA studies with the state, and you're seeing some things, and you say, you know what I see is I see that in these upper neighborhoods, we're low in value. And in these lower values, we seem to be, or lower neighborhoods, we seem to be holding steady. We need, because you'd like to stay in balance.
And I could, we could do that, absolutely. For the Springfield statistical, we just completed, we did, we saw a real direct correlation in land, parcels of five acres or greater. We're selling much differently than, you know, parcels of five acres or less.
Right.
So we're able to really treat those.
And we're able to target that village area too, because in this pandemic, when you did Springfield, you, you know, Springfield's very different. Even you could buy a house for sixty thousand dollars, and all of a sudden, two years later, that same house is selling for a hundred and seventy-five. It just, they went through the roof. I mean, relatively speaking, it's still affordable, but that's the way the market changed there. There was a time that I got discovered. It's affordable. Affordability is, 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 is flowing to community software changes.
Making them not affordable.
In essence, in essence, yeah.
All right. Any other questions of Bill or?
Just want to make sure that, that the questions. I think, I think you covered what we asked as far as the addendum. Went, yeah, yeah, they have a very detailed work in there, but I think she said that was also, and references.
I would make just one more basic comment, I'll stop. But this system can provide you with really a cornerstone for, for informational systems for the future in this community, its connection to GIS. This can become fundamental and foundational to what you may do dealing with zoning administrators and whatever it might be. And being able to tie those departments together so that they're looking at similar data is going to get more and more critical as you go along. You know it is. It's knowing your community, I mean, your ability to say, show me every house in town that's older than eighteen fifty, because maybe there's a, a plan in the state that about, you know, helping older houses, whatever it might. This is so easily identifiable in the system that it, it, this, I think this, this serves as a real strong foundation for when you might be ten years from now, particularly GIS, because GIS is going to become huge just to state. It already is, and it is in every state, and it's geographical information systems. I'm sorry, throwing acronyms out there, but it's, it's, it's pretty fundamental. Anything else?
Just real quick, the, the data that we're going to be using for VT Pi as far as validation of sales, how easy can we take hopefully validated sales from Patriot to move over to that?
Can we, we just say this, Patriot Maxiomatic is a company that does VT Pi, are, are partners. So they're, they're very, they're very, very well, they're very familiar. They sell software. That, that's going to be one of the reasons. I'm, I'm looking forward to this, trying to connect with, with better data systems, with memory. It's a, it's a, it's a good, solid system, but it's written in real old language, so it's tough to, to communicate with. Written in Fox.
Okay. Is everybody, well, we really appreciate you coming and giving a presentation and coming all the way down from Linden and down from Ludlow. And it, it, this did help a lot in, in our, obviously, nobody on this board's been through a reappraisal. Linda hasn't been through a real, a townwide reappraisal, so we, we all want to try to understand as much as we can. And there's a lot of information, obviously, that you guys are, know, and we do appreciate the, the effort in coming down here. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, you guys are going to pack up, right? So is that window open over there? It's really getting hot in here. Thank you, Andy. So while they clear out, we'll just try to put it down in here a little bit. It was on on the banner. It was hot.
No.
Poor Randy, he's cold. Thank you. Andy, I need to talk to you about you're going to need to go into the meeting, but before you leave, I want to ask you something. Are you staying for a few minutes?
Um, I'm probably not going to stay for the whole meeting.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to jump into public comments. Do you have any public comments? I have a public comment that was submitted by Keith Sullivan of Dover, and I'm going to read this. It's going to take me a few minutes to read this. This was submitted on Friday afternoon. And he has asked us to put it into the record. I write in support of the Dover Town Clerk Andy McLean, Economic Development Director Eric DeRozier, as well as the Dover Select Board with respect to the last select board meeting on June seventh. A local trails association slash advocacy group attempted specifically to paint Andy McLean, among other things, as an obstacle in their quest, quest to push ahead on the Ridge Trail project while asserting quote unquote misconduct on his part. As well, this group is seemingly attempting to usurp the town of Dover to a secondary role on this project in cooperation with the U.S. Forest Service. Sorry. I view this conduct as both shameful and unacceptable, especially from one of the supposed partners in this project. Frankly, I view the entire interaction as a missed opportunity. While it should have been a meeting to update, discuss, and perhaps briefly solve, problem solve, the group actually made it personal and clearly intent on self-dealing with making various unsubstantiated allegations. Nothing in print to be added to the, to the record for the public to view. Local trail association stewardship groups are a component to such projects involving Forest Service. And a history of cooperation, with a history of cooperation, in particular, partnership of three entities. This group has a seat at the table and a role. Knowing your role is a core competency, competency skill. A good teammate or partner is foundational in such endeavors, however. I view the aforementioned, aforementioned exchange encounter to this. Certainly, it is not a good, good faith to make unsubstantiated allegations against anyone, then profess to be a partner. It is apparent, perhaps, that the parent, that the parent groups of the Trail Association that, that they umbrella under probably, that, that which they umbrella under probably would not support their need for conflict and general combativeness, that which this group represents itself in open public hearings. With regard to Andy McLean, he is a vital asset to the project. Who had the foresight fifteen years ago to go, go, when the Forest Service purchased this large property of land off Handle Road, he considered a use for it. The plan has gone through various iterations over the course of time, and it has not been without challenges. Andy has always adopted, communi- adapted, communi- adopted, communicated, and exhibited full transparency on the project as a point person for the Dover Select Board. His only motive was for the greater good. His public service is selfless, and we are grateful for his work along with Eric DeRozier and the Dover Select for, and the Select Board too. The town of Dover is a key stakeholder in this project for multiple reasons. Consistently demonstrating their commitment with time, energy, funding, and also possesses the actual physical entry point to the parcel of land along Handle Road. It has been an innovative cooperative, cooperation between the USFS and the town. It would be an understatement to think that all the stakeholders would like to see the project to completion. We are blessed to live in an amazing area. And this would be a great, another great venue for all of us to experience. The town of Dover has always led from the front with talented people and practices. Allow those people to do their jobs. Certainly, they do not work for personal acclaim or recognition. They can continue to support the, with the, we can continue to support in, in support of these people specifically on the project with positive conversation and collaborative mentality. Surely, everyone will enjoy the final result, but, but still a satisfying journey for those involved, knowing different groups unified to fulfill the completion of this project, given its size and scale. Keith Sullivan, Dover. Now, there's an addendum to that that came in this afternoon. FYI, on Monday, June twentieth, I had a phone conversation with Nick Bennett at the, at Vumba shortly before I then forwarded the same note, see below, to him. I had previously sent to the Select Board, so he sent this letter to Vumba in the spirit of further discussion and transparency. I mentioned, this could be an opportunity for additional retraining and counsel from his side with the local partner groups, perhaps resulting in positive change. In addition, I also referred him to the link to the board meeting of June seventh in question. Note, I am efforting to reach Cat Mount Trail Association, but thus far have had no contact as of yet. Best. So that, he wanted it in the record. It's been right into the record. And I just want to let everybody know that's the update based on the meeting of, that he viewed on, again. Yes, I assume he viewed it on tape. Any comments? Anything else for public comment? All right. Unfinished business. We're going to move on to the, review the fund program assurances document for Snow Lake Lodge, Dan Grant. Dan Grant. Jeanette has prefilled, I think there's a copy of it there, there's a copy of it here. Prefilled all of the information. We have to attest to all of this, that we will complete this, and then they are looking for us to sign and submit.
Sarah, do we need to have, is there any reason to have a side agreement with Mount Snow specifically for this? Or are we simply attesting to, we're going to be responsible with the money?
Mount Snow will not hire the person to do this work. We will hire the person. This is our, this is on us.
Okay. It's one of those projects that sometimes it's hard to tell which one's.
So we are going to hire the company. We have to oversee the company to do this, but isn't it on a lot of Mount Snow property?
It we have a right of way on top of the dam. But that is our.
Is this only the this is not only the dam part, this is lowering the dam, bringing the water down.
This is to do the engineering scoping. This is it. This is just a very limited part of it. This is a grant that we have potentially received to do a scoping study engineering.
And am I correct that Jeanette's hours are being calculated and covered for her work on this as well? We're just gonna build you, you're gonna have a thirty hour a day day, right?
Wyndham Regional is is definitely gonna help us with this, and their expertise will be very, very important. The partnership between the state, Wyndham Regional, and the town is gonna be critical.
Oh, right. Would she be getting paid overtime?
I don't know the answer to that.
If it's overtime, you're more.
Yeah.
How how would, how will it not be? It's not like you're sitting around looking for something.
No, I know, but I don't wanna give it between.
Randy.
So I'll just comment on that if you follow what the police department does when we work grants. It's always at either two things, one depending on what kind of grant you're on. Either it's paid if the officer's time and a half rate or is those uh take that back instead of time and a half rate, the stuff I talked about, that's a point, but included is that price that you bill on that grant. It's gonna be your fight going retirement and stuff like that. So that's what you probably would wanna build out on the grant for the hours. Get all that back. Shelley can help out with that.
And they only had three thousand dollars in administrative costs built into the the grant, but they said that they could go higher on it. They the state really wants this project done. So I think that um we probably will ask them to 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 add on to that. So yes, but that that should not be the stumbling block, I don't think, to get the administrative side, to get the scope and study done. Yes, yes.
Are we authorizing the order just yet? That's you, right?
That's my question. Is that I signed these or these not?
Authorized.
I signed.
Well, I'm happy. If you wanna sign it, I'm fine. But before you told me you didn't want you didn't feel comfortable signing.
Right, because I didn't know.
Okay, so if we support it. We will make a motion to have.
So make a motion that we that the board authorizes Jeanette effort to sign the Flood Resilient Communities Fund Document.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Jeanette. Okay, um Jeanette?
Oh, no, Ed Mecca.
Oh, Ed.
Hi.
Okay, we're moving along, and we're going to new business, which is the introduction and update from Mount Snow's new TM, Brian Sudalak. How'd I do? Sudalak?
Sudolf.
Sudolf. Sudolf. Sudolf, everything is a Brian, Brian S.
Brian S.
It's all yours, Brian.
First off, thanks for having me today. This is my first time participating. I've met some of the people in the room, just wanted to, you know, give you an idea of who I am and what I'm all about and uh you know, I brand new, I've been here six weeks. Beautiful place. I have really never been to Mount Snow. I've been here in March for two days and that was it. I did grow up on the East Coast. I am from Jersey. You know, that's good. It's great to actually get back to the East Coast and enjoy, you know, what Vermont has to offer for me. Oh, just quick background, like I've spent the last two winters at the Val Mountain. Prior to that, I was in Park City for twenty eight years. I've been in the ski industry for thirty plus years. I love skiing. I love the industry. I love everything that occurs to people and you know, when I look at Mount Snow, you know, I got to ski it a couple of times in March, but beautiful resort, uh beautiful area. You know, the the key for me is, you know, I'm all about the experience of our employees first, and the experience about the guests comes second. So really, it it interacts with the community is most important because we're we're all in this together. And anything that I can do to help this community be better, or what we can do to work together in the community is kind of what I'm all about. My goal is always open. If you do hear stuff that like, oh, that's weird, please reach out to me. I wanna stay in the open communication with everybody and, you know, trying to create a really good relationship here. As far as the resort goes, um, you know, summer, if you haven't been up to the Friday block parties, they're gaining momentum each week. It's kind of a fun thing for families and people gathering, something new that we started this year. Our lift construction projects are going really good. We had a helicopter here two weeks ago flying out the rest of the old towers. All the old stuff is out. All the new stuff is gonna start to happen pretty soon, forming up towers and terminals. It's just an exciting time to be there, exciting for me to watch it happen and be a part of it. The other piece I just want to touch on real briefly is our master plan that we plan to renew here in the next couple of days, probably. The original plan is from two thousand and ten. Uh, there's not a whole lot of change in it. We will be having a a public meeting kind of on Zoom on Monday. Uh, it's in the paper, it'll be in the paper on Thursday. How to get to it? If you go to the Mount Snow website under events, you can link to it there. It starts at five o'clock on Monday. We'll have our team from UHP there kind of walk through it. At a pretty high level, again, there's there's not a whole lot of change from back in two thousand and ten. We had guns and stuff. A lot of stuff still in there. Again, it's like, it's a thirty year plan looking out and, you know, instead of these plans are built so we don't piece things together, that we actually have a plan and if we ever decide to do anything. But yeah, besides, you know, excited to be here and excited for Sunday to come out and warmth to come back. It was a little chilly this weekend.
Yeah. We.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions for Brian? I don't see any. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming. Don't be a stranger. You're invited anytime. All right. Uh, we're gonna move right over to economic development by town marketing presentation, and I think we have Tim Dolan.
You do. How's everybody doing? Thanks for having me tonight. Just gonna share my screen here as we have a short presentation for you guys. So we've been really busy um trying to execute, you know, year two of that five-year marketing plan um that we talked about when we came for funding to you guys back in February. So we've been trying to put that funding to good use and just wanted to give you an update on what we've got out in the market here um so far. So first piece of our campaign is Google Ads, so Google AdWords. Um, you know, when you search on Google, our, you know, listings get brought up to the top. Um, so that's been up and running for just over a month and a half now since about May eleventh. And I've been seeing really good results, getting uh, you know, maxing out our budget daily. And the big change from what we've done in the past this year was we really broadened out our search terms. So in the past, it was, you know, Deerfield Valley, Southern Vermont, things like that, and we've kind of broadened that out to be more generic Vermont. So trying to capture those people that know they want to come to Vermont, but not really sure where. So trying to funnel them into, you know, our Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley here with that. And you can kind of see, you know, that that's helped in our top search results, you know, things to do in Vermont, things to do in Southern Vermont, visit Vermont, Vermont tourism. Really generic terms that people are typing in, um and then getting funneled to, you know, our webpage when they click on. So so far, that's been running really well, just about under twenty one hun- or twenty one thousand impressions and about twenty one hundred clicks to go along with that. So really happy with those results so far. Now, we've got our digital campaign, which was a really big lift to get up and running, and that's, you know, got up in different parts of May for different segments of the campaign. Um, but you know, in mid-May for the most part of it. So our big focus was on pragmatic display and Facebook, Instagram advertising. But we're also testing this year YouTube and TikTok channels. So, you know, the five-year plan identified our two main demographics that we're targeting. So that's our multi-generational families, which we're not advertising on TikTok to because they're, you know, tech traditionally not the ones using TikTok. So that didn't really make much sense, but that young adult audience absolutely is. So we are using, you know, TikTok for that young adult eighteen to thirty-five demographic. That is our second target group um there. So, you know, one of the things we talked about in February was that, you know, we didn't have a chance last summer to get out and get anybody taking photographs in uh the summertime. We started in the fall, so we've got some great fall stuff that'll come up in late August. But to start out this summer, we had to use some stock imagery. Um, but we tried, you know, selecting stuff that really looked like the Deerfield Valley and could represent what you could expect from a vacation to Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley. But we are, you know, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, doing a lot of photo content capture here in June. And so we'll be doing some image swaps in early July. That'll get some more authentic photos of our area out there. So really excited that our digital campaign is out there. And, you know, here are some display examples that are targeting that family audience. Um, you know, the five-year plan, you know, highlighted, you know, some of our main differentiators as hiking, biking. You know, the lake is a huge one, having, you know, the largest lake in Vermont. Um, so, you know, tried to focus on that as well as, you know, the dining experiences here. So, you know, like I said, we use a lot of stock imagery. One of these photos is authentic from Southern Vermont. We did have one, but um, you know, it's really hard to tell which, and I think that's, you know, a good attribute of the other photos is, even though they're not necessarily from here, um, it's hard to tell which one is and which aren't. So really happy with those. But again, looking forward to getting some switched out in early July. Similar with young adult, um, you know, this is display as well. So just different imagery going out to that young adult audience. And then Facebook, Instagram is the other really big piece of the digital campaign, and, you know, this is actually where we're spending the most money um based on past performance, as well as the recommendations from the five-year plan. So, you know, similar imagery um that we're using, but you know, the great thing about Facebook is you also have text blocks that you can utilize to, you know, add additional messaging to. Um, you know, and one of the other big differentiators for us is our closeness, you know, to those major metro areas that we're targeting, um and especially this year with gas prices going so far up. Um, you know, that's really important. So we're using some of those text blocks to kind of highlight how close we are to people and, you know, get it into their, you know, um heads that they can come have a Vermont vacation, everything they want here, right, or everything they want about Vermont right here in the southern part of the state, close to home for them. So again, family and then young adults, similar, um but, you know, different different texts to kind of speak directly to that audience. And then, like I said, we're testing out YouTube this year. So um because, you know, we are just testing and videos expensive to produce, we just produced one video that had multipurpose for both audiences. So that's running on YouTube right now, and, you know, the great thing about the video is those are assets that we had. So all the clips in that video were authentic, you know, taken here in Southern Vermont. And then we also did a TikTok video. Like I said, this is just targeting those younger adults. And again, video is expensive to produce, so we use the same video in a different format, but changed up the music to kind of fit that young adult and TikTok audience a little bit better. So that's everything that we have out running in the market right now. Um, you know, we're again, just about a month in, so some of that is just kind of finished optimizing and really starting to pick up. So we'll continue to kind of monitor how those are doing and, you know, really start collecting data and analyzing that to kind of see how this is performing. Um, you know, and kind of what impact we're making. So last part, we just wanted to update you guys on is, like I said earlier, the content capturing piece. Um, you know, trying to get out there this month of June and really capture authentic Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley imagery that we can use in this update as well as in future campaigns. So we've hired two new photographers um to come on and that, you know, are are out and about, you know, exploring the Deerfield Valley in their normal lives and carrying a uh camera with them and, you know, sharing some great photos with us. Um, we also have a social media content creator now who is, you know, a young adult that's, you know, again, out there exploring Deerfield Valley and just in her normal life, you know, taking great social media type content for us, and that's really helped us have new and fresh content on our social media channels really daily at this point, which is huge to have. Um, you know, fresh stuff going all the time on social media. So then we've also got had a photo shoot two weeks ago on June second um that we had photo and video with both the family and a group of young adults and did some hiking over at Hogback up to the Fire Tower, did uh some hiking down at Molly Stark, and then did outdoor dining and ice cream at Wahoo's. And I'll share some of the photos that we got out of that in a second. And then we've got another photo shoot coming up here on June twenty ninth and thirtieth. So that's next Wednesday and Thursday. Two days split kind of between the towns. So the first day, we'll be heading over to the Valley Trail, the paved section um as well as the town park here in Dover as well, and then up to crosstown trails and doing hiking and biking on both of those with both our young adult and family groups, then heading over to the Mount Snow Golf Course and getting some golf shots, doing lunch out on the fairways deck to get that great outdoor dining experience with that huge valley view out there. And then ending that day by going downtown Wilmington and just getting some shots of the young adults hanging out in town and doing some shopping down there. And then day two is concentrated um on Harriman's Reservoir and doing boating, swimming, going over the picnic area, and then after we're done over there, heading up to Hogback and doing ice cream at the country store for the family group. And our young adults be going over and having some cocktails out on the deck at the Metcalf Distillery. So a lot of exciting photography, I think that we're gonna get out of that. That was part of the grant that we received from the state. And um, you know, part of the grant and the reason we were awarded the biggest amount was because um we're gonna include a diversity component to it. So Trampoline, our ad agency who's doing the photo shoot, has been working really hard to get some diverse models in the air for us. Um, so that's really exciting. And just wanted to give a big thank you to Mount Snow, High Country Marina, Metcalf Distillery, and Hogback Mountain Country Store, because they're all playing kind of an integral part in um donating some different aspects of um of this photo shoot to us to make this possible. So last slide I have is just some of the photography that we were able to get out of that June second photo shoot. Um, so like I said, went up to the Fire Tower and got some really great shots up there of the view and some of the young adults enjoying it. Hiking over in Molly Stark and then ending the day over at Wahoo's with some ice cream, outdoor food, and hanging out down by the uh stream over there. So that's what we have going on. Um, you know, like I said, really excited to have this stuff. So that's what we have going on. Um, you know, like I said, really excited to have this stuff out into the market now. And now we start looking at how it performs. Um, and you know, hopefully making an impact on our tourism here this summer. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Anybody, any questions for Tim before we let him go? Thank you, Tim. That was very informative. Hopefully have good weather.
Fingers crossed. Thank you guys. I appreciate it. And we'll update you again in a couple of months here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Now we have uh the Wine and Harvest Festival application. Is that you, Eric or Shannon?
That would be me. Um, so Bethany, uh who you guys have met before, when she came to talk to us about Blueberry, submitted this application for Wine and Harvest Festival. Um, you know, Shannon and I took a look through it. Uh, our department is in support of the event, obviously. Uh, would like to see it return to its pre-COVID glory. Um, so are absolutely in favor of funding uh the event this year.
Can you tell us how much the increase is over previous years?
There's actually not an increase. This is the same amount that was asked for last time.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was the only error that I found in the in the application. Well, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah, no, it's there's, it's actually not, it's actually not an um, an additional amount. So you, it used to be that the chamber got eleven and a half for the Wine and Harvest Festival. So this is actually less than what was typically um pre-COVID was taken. I think the last the last Wine and Harvest Festival that was run, the funding was eighty-five hundred. So this would be the same as that one. But previous to that, yes, it was actually eleven and a half thousand. So this amount is going down as that event continues to grow. Um, you know, and I, like I said, I support fully funding just because I'd like to see, i- it is a big event for Dover, um especially when it gets tied into, you know, pairing dinners and things at some restaurants here in town. Um, and I would like to see those things come, come back. So uh I would, I would support funding of this event.
I have a question for Bethany.
Yeah.
Are those pairing dinners, uh are you trying to put those together as part of the festival this year?
Yes. Yep. Our hope is to get as close to pre-COVID as possible.
Other questions? I hear none. Did we used to have the um Southern Vermont History, Natural History Museum as part of this?
That's the next application.
Oh, that's.
So they, they are considered part of the weekend festivities. However, we've never directly funded that portion of the festival. All of that money typically went to the chamber and the chamber would kind of donate the use of the tents to uh the history museum as part of, you know, helping them out through the weekend. Um, but that's why they're they're submitted as separate events this year so that the, the history museum can also get some funding for their portion of the event.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody? Does somebody want to make a motion? Uh, make a motion to approve the Wine and Harvest Festival grant application in the amount of eighty-five hundred?
Second by Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bethany.
Uh, the next is the Southern Vermont Natural, the Southern Vermont History Museum Wildlife Festival Event Application.
So this was submitted by Michael Clough, who is the uh director of the organization. He is unable to be with us tonight, which is why. Uh, Ed, are you still the board president?
Yeah, I'm the board president and executive director. Mike, we call him the managing director. He really are, are, are feet on the ground. Um, and who does most of our, our, uh, our education program. We thought with some funding this year, we could really expand our advertising and advert- and um and bring in more um I'm trying to think of the name we use, but, but bigger events, bigger, uh, bigger showcase uh things. Right now, we have twenty different groups signed up. Um, with a very diverse group. It's everywhere from a, you know, the lo- local game club, Department of Fish and Game to uh Vens of Vermont Department of Natural Science. Um, but we have uh twenty groups signed up now and probably another dozen that um we're waiting to hear back from. Um, we've had over a thousand people previously at this event, but we fill with some good advertising and some good, um, you know, big items there. In the past, we've had like a wolf. We've had a um, a bobcat. We've had someone, you know, bringing these different live animals. We'll probably have our bald eagles there that we have at the museum uh there. But having some of these uh big items there will be able to bring people from that area. Uh, I think we want to advertise this year on the radio, uh get people from, you know, just a wider geographic area down to, you know, to, to Northern Mass and, and over into the Keene area to, to attend the event. So that's what we're looking to do.
Um.
Yes.
So the, I don't see an ask on the amount of money. That line is blank.
It is.
So it was in, so sorry, I, I put it in the email. Um, it did come through uh in Mike's email. They're looking for three thousand dollars.
And the Economic Development Department, are, are you supporting this grant application?
Absolutely. So a lot of the things that we tend to focus on, you know, sponsoring are uh more adult oriented or, you know, young adult oriented. So um re- definitely in support of this because it focuses on that demographic of families, I think. Um, you know, we hit the residents with this one as well as, um, you know, families in the surrounding towns and then families that have second homes here and will travel for the day. So definitely in support of this. I think it's a very reasonable amount of money to request um for the amount of money or the amount of people that it could bring into town potentially.
Any comments? Any questions? Anybody, anybody? I make a motion that we approve the three thousand dollar grant for the uh Southern Vermont Natural History Museum Wildlife Festival.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving, um, thank.
Thank you for this support. We appreciate it.
We're looking forward to it. Should be great. Now we're going to move on to dog waste stations.
Okay, so um plenty of input from our public recently on the amount of options in terms of uh disposal of dog waste along the page section of the uh Valley Trail as well as our trailheads um at the Town Forest and uh the crosstown trail on either end. So uh the document, the PDF that I sent you guys, provided to me by my lovely assistant director Shannon, shows the purchase of thirty-two hundred uh more dog waste bags. Um, a total of five of our low pro- low, low-profile dog stations uh for waste uh as well as two, uh two hundred case of the dog station can liners. Uh, we would be putting these uh along the Valley Trail. So right now, the only option available for uh disposing of your dog waste is to let to, to get a bag from the town park and then to uh return that bag to the town park after the fact. Uh, we would like to have, we would like to put one station um on the lawn on our property in between the town, uh the church and the town office. Uh, an additional station in the vicinity of the Green Iron Bridge on the paved section of the trail. Uh, there would be one on either end of the cross on, at both parking lots for crosstown and one up at the Town Forest for a total of five. Uh, those also include a solar light for anyone who happens to be uh disposing of their dog waste um at, at dusk or, or at dark. Um, they will not be, you know, direct. Our goal here is not to put them right out on Route one hundred where it's the first thing you see, but to put them where they would be accessible. Um, you know, most recently, you know, again, there's been a lot of feedback from dog owners and all.
Eric, you're breaking up.
Trail kind of commenting, hey, there's something taken care of. We think it's a, oh.
Go over, Shannon.
You, Eric, you. Now you're back.
Shannon.
I mean, I can hop in, but it's kind of funny watching you just freeze. But I can. Um, so yes, we would like to put them uh in a few spots, one at either end of the crosstown um Long Valley Trail. We did talk to Travis. Um, so does anybody have any questions for Eric?
Joe first, then Tavi.
So we're going to provide bags, correct? Are we providing waste receptacles for these bags?
Yes, they're right here in.
And so that's what this is for. So right now, yeah, right now, there's only one bag station in the park, and that's also where the three trash cans are. So these would be like the whole thing. So get your bag and a disposal in the same spot. Um, and then enough bags to stock them, um figuring we empty them like three times a week at the most.
That's, uh, so Travis is on board that he is in charge of, or is the economic development in charge of emptying those?
I mean, we could put Eric in charge of it, but um Travis did say it was okay.
I wonder.
Are we going to empty them year round?
I believe so. I see Travis. Travis, would you like to join our conversation?
Yeah, I would. Yes. I would say we could, I, I thought they were a summertime thing, but yes, I did uh let Dave know that these were up and coming and they were going to be installed. So yes, we, we will take care of that.
Eric?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I would think that in the winter time, we'd be emptying these on a much a, a much lesser amount than we would be in the summer.
Thank you. Other questions? Uh, hearing none? Any comments?
Tavi, very happy that this is finally progressing. There have been quite a few discussions and I'm really delighted to see that this is happening.
Okay, anything else? Somebody want to make a motion that we purchase these products?
I make a motion that we purchase five of the low-profile dog stations with accessory elements um for a grand total of one thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. It got cut off.
And, and point seven something.
Right. Seventeen twenty-one and change.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. Um, a second? Any discussion? Yes.
I would like to know if Joe's, Joe doesn't look happy. I would like to know why.
I, I am not happy because it's an incurred cost. A dog owner should take care of their own bags, carry it with them. When I take my dog for a walk, I have a little bone on him. And, you know, it's just one more thing that were costs, but I just hope people will respect it. We educate people on using it so that it is much. I see a lot of people put the bags, obviously, your property management, they'll put the bag and the poop in the bag, and they sleep it. So that is my only thing that I've seen. Hopefully that won't occur. And uh, I hope they do do well upon us, that we're giving them this added feature and amenity to the town of Dover. That's my comment.
Thank you, Eric.
So, so my wish, obviously, Joe, would be that each of our dog owners or visitor dog owners were as responsible as you. Um, but it, that's unfortunately not the case. So in order to kind of combat the problem, this is the best scenario we came up with. Most recently, we found one of these bags thrown into the woods in our parking lot at the town office. So if we have to put some trash cans out to address the issue, then I think we need to do that.
Remember, that's not going to be the only trash. It's going to go into the trash cans.
So those are designed to.
I'm not against it. I'm not against it. I'm just.
Sorry.
Eric?
I, I just wanted to point out that those trash cans are designed to limit the amount of waste that fit into them uh to cut down on that happen.
Maybe they can throw the masks in there that they, they threw all over the trails. Okay, so we have a uh motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? And next we have the proxy slash alternate, alternates for the Dover Trails and Recreation Committee. I assume this is proxy voting.
In order to make, oh.
In order to make quorums. Sorry, Eric.
In order, yeah, sorry. In order to make quorum, um, it's been requested or it's, it's been discussed that we allow a proxy to be nominated within twelve hours of the meeting or for an organization to name a full-time alternate uh to attend those meetings. The way I'd like to see this is that individuals on the committee are still required to meet the requirements of the committee where they can miss no more than three meetings in a year. But should they have to miss one of those meetings, they can provide that proxy or alternate to meet quorum for those meetings.
Any comments about? And this should allow, since you only meet once a month, that should hopefully allow you to meet twelve times a year, correct?
Correct.
Sarah, we haven't, we've only failed to meet a quorum a couple of times, but.
One time, uh, one time, I believe.
But it is frustrating because, because it's only once a month. So it would be helpful.
So Shannon just corrected me. It was two times, I believe. There was one meeting close to our inception of the committee that we did not meet quorum. And then just recently, we missed one, but I don't want it to be an issue with the committee moving forward. I don't want anyone to feel as though they were not able to provide us with updates or communicate to the Trails Committee anything they're looking to communicate on that monthly basis.
And this would be a vote, a voting member for that particular meeting so that you could potentially bring forward uh projects to the select board?
Correct. And it would not apply to individual members, only our organizations. So typically, anyone who's involved in those organizations would be voting on behalf of the way the organization feels about the topic in the first place. Which is why we would be okay with allowing another member of their organization to vote. This would not apply to Dover resident or Dover business owner seat holders.
How about the select board?
Hadn't thought of that. Sarah's pretty good at showing up.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any issues with the, the proxies or the alternates? And I guess it's, some organizations want to have it one way and some want to have it the other way. So kind of leaves it flexible depending on uh the, the organization represented. Okay, I guess you had, you uh, yes, Jim.
Would it be best to uh pull the Trails Group to see which way they may like to go?
They have, I believe.
In which way do they want?
Both.
Kind of split. There's not a firm consensus of one or the other.
So some groups have a pecking order, I think, that they want. And another person, another person in the video I watched suggested that it wouldn't be any good if that next person couldn't attend the, the meeting at the last minute. Say, say you were sick and couldn't go, or you had something come up. So if they can have a proxy um in their stead, then that person could be a representative member and vote. Who could attend the meeting? Yes, Jim.
Can you have a proxy, a proxy that will exceed the three-meeting limit? An individual?
So that is what I'm trying to avoid. I would like to follow the admit, the, the original committee charge that requires that they miss no more than three meetings throughout the year. If they are going to break that three-meeting threshold, then we would discuss replacing them on the committee with another member of the organization. I would like to stick with the committee. I would like to stick with the committee, the original rules in the committee charge. This is, this is simply to try to meet that quorum on a consistent basis.
Anything else about the proxy alternate option? All right. I think you're good to go then. All right. I need a motion to go on the Board of Liquor Control. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's, we have a request to cater by the Deerfield Valley Bar and Bottle for a wedding and barbecue at Cooper Hill on July 15th. And this is signed by the town clerk, but we're just basically giving you our blessing. Well, they have a liquor license. Deerfield Beverage Concepts. Yes.
Really does not have a liquor license anymore. So that's why we need someone outside.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We moved to going to liquor control. No, I, oh, we didn't move. Motion to approve the request for catering by Deerfield Bar and Bottle at Cooper Hill on July 15th. Second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Since we don't sign it, it's just, it's basically Andy wants to get our approved. We authorized Andy. I need a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control. So moved. So, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a consent, consent agenda for the minutes of June 7th, June 10th and June 17th. We cannot approve the June 17th because only two members are here who were at that meeting. Cause we only had three members at that meeting. So we cannot approve those. So June 7th and June 10th, let me see who was at those meetings. Everybody. No, Dan wasn't here. June 10th was the, was the review, right? June 10th was the review. And it was, it was four of us. Yes. It was the people who were here. Okay. All right. So we can all. Motion to approve the minutes of June 10th. Second, that is.
Yes, second.
Joe?
Or.
Any changes, corrections? Nine pages on the, the. That's, no, the 10th was like a parallel. On the 7th, yes. I didn't, this is for the 10th. I'm sorry. Oh, we jumped the sixth. I did. I, I. Okay, hold on. Trying to figure out who's where.
Everybody was at the June 7th meeting.
Okay. So we can, so we can, the four of us can vote on the 7th and the 10th. Yes. So we. Okay. So I amend my motion to approve the minutes of June 7th and June 10th. Joey? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the nine pages of minutes though. Yes. And we have the warrants for June 11th of $160,873.07. You need a move?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have FYIs. We have a letter from the gathering place and I'm not going to read that letter. I'm just going to read the little comment, uh, with your generosity, we continue our work for, for our shared community with gratitude magic. So, and anybody wants to see information on that? BLCT Member Guide and Annual Report. Annual Report is here. If anybody wants to see the BLCT Annual Report, it's compelling. We have the first concert in the park Sunday and the weekend looks really nice with the Full Miles Band in the park on Saturday afternoon at two. We have a planning commission meeting on the 27th at 6:30 PM, which is next week. Monday, we have open mic night on June 29th at 6:00 PM. That is Wednesday. We, our next select board meeting is July 5th and again at six o'clock for the other presentation for the Townwide Reappraisal. Correct. And then we have a Trails and Rec Committee meeting on July 12th at 6:30 PM. All right. That's a full slate of things. Any liaison reports? I hear none. I have no need for an executive session and I've heard none. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:30.